Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order 7:30, 8 PM. Could I please have the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Cullen?
Here.
Trustee David Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Levinson?
Present.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnall?
Here.
Village President Torpe?
Here.
Also President Barry Lewis, Village Administrator, Stephen Rothen, Village Counsel, Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator, Susan Caljean, Village Clerk. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in the Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
Thank you. We have one resolution to go into executive session to start.
Okay, that is Resolution 2014-067. Resolution authorizing an executive session at the March 24th, 2014 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. The one item that we have for executive session discussion tonight is redevelopment opportunity, which is attorney-client privilege in a contract negotiation. Do you have a motion?
Could I add a couple items to that, Mr. President? That have developed in recent... One would be a PBA grievance that I think, believe you all shared with, which is potential litigation personnel. Also, JAC, anticipated potential litigation. And in addition, I think there was an email late this afternoon relating to a resolution that's actually on this potential litigation regarding a bid on the skate house duck pond project.
I could get the last one, Barry.
It's potential litigation on the skate house project.
Okay, so that's four items. Redevelopment opportunity, the PBA grievance, JAC, the skate house duck pond project.
I move the ordinance.
The resolution?
The resolution, sorry.
Motion by Trustee Cullen, second by Trustee Levinson. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. We'll be back at 8:00. Probably not though.
Thank you, too.[161.31][161.31]1566
Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order 8:04 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Clark.
Still here.
Trustee Colum.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
President.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, a couple of announcements to get us started. The first, really excited to be able to announce Restaurant Week. On the South Orange Village Center Alliance is hosting its first ever Restaurant Week from April 5th through April 12th. More than 20 restaurants and food establishments from around town are participating and offering discounts such as up to 20% off meals and two-for-one items. To see a list of all the participating residents, oh sorry, restaurants, and their offers during Restaurant Week, please visit the Village Center Alliance's website at sovillagecenter.org and you can find the Restaurant Week banner there. Really hope everybody participates. There's going to be a lot of social media about it, so share with your friends, let everybody know. It's a great way to support our local businesses. Also another reminder that we're looking for some volunteers still for a couple committees. One of the main ones that we are restarting is the Public Information and Marketing Committee, which trustee Steve Schnall will be chairing, which we're really excited about. And so if anybody's interested in being involved in that committee or any other way to get involved in town, please visit the website at southorange.org and find the volunteering Another announcement about the Civic Engagement Institute, this is the Community Coalition on Races Civic Engagement Institute, and it's a four-week workshop that was started on March 22nd. It's from 9:30 to 12:30 every Saturday, and the next dates are the 29th and April 5th. This is free if people are interested in this or finding more about it, you can visit two towns.org. Just a reminder about SO Connect, which is our mobile 311 application powered by Public Stuff. So we've officially launched our application. We've gotten a number over 100 in the first couple of weeks service requests in, and if you're interested in filing any service request with the village, whether it's a street light out, a code enforcement issue, a pothole, garbage, or anything like that, anything that you might see, please download the application. You can download it in the Google Play Store and the iTunes Store for your phone, and you can also visit southorange.org/311, and you can file the request on the website there. And if you call anybody in Village Hall, any staff will also be able to put in a request for you. It's a really exciting program. It allows us to connect you more directly with the departments that will be carrying out the requests, and allows us to track the information a little bit better and prioritize things more. So we definitely ask folks to take advantage of it. If you use it and there are problems, please let us know. If you use it and you really like it, please let your neighbors know, so we can get more people using this application. Also want to remind everybody, on the dais and not, that we have a planning and vision meeting on Monday at 7:30. That sounded like that had worked for everybody. I don't know if we've got a space figured out yet. We do not, but as soon as we do, we will notice that it'll probably be somewhere at Seton Hall. It won't be at Seton Hall. It will be somewhere not at Seton Hall. And we will notice that when we get there, that's a chance for us to give a little bit of a recap about everything that we've done in the past year, and talk about some of our goals for the upcoming year, and what our biggest priorities are going to be as a board. I also want to defer to trustee Davis Ford for a moment to welcome our new village clerk.
Well, on behalf of the whole entire board, we want to just extend a real welcome to Susan Caljean. We, as a result of an extensive search, she definitely was in a class by herself, and it was a unanimous decision that she would fit quite well in the village, but also took into consideration her extensive certifications. She was, her last position was 13 years as a clerk in Chatham Borough, and we're just thrilled that she decided that this was the place for her to be. So on behalf of the entire board, Susan, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you. Trustee Colum, did you, when I was talking about SO Connect, do you want to say anything about the gaslight project, please?
I do. So one of the initiatives of the Public Safety Committee is that on Thursday, April 3rd, we're going to be matching volunteers from Seton Hall and residents, and the goal is to identify all the gas lamp outages throughout the community. Obviously, it's a public safety concern with more people, especially in the good weather, walking around. If you notice around town, there are several lamps that are out. So we are going to be using the new South Orange Connect slash Public Stuff application, and the volunteers will be pairing off and going out into town, broken down by zone, to identify all the gas lamp outages and do a full inventory of, you know, which ones aren't working. And hopefully PSENG will be able to turn those around pretty quickly. And I think that based on the ones that have been submitted so far, they have been able to turn them around very quickly. So the hope is that in one, you know, one night, we can get as many as possible, turn them over, and light the night up.
Great, thanks.
So we're meeting at 6 o'clock at our municipal offices. We're going to have some pizza for the volunteers, and thus far, we have about 30 people signed up.
Awesome.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask the Community Relations Committee to come on up. We are very happy to have another villager of the month presentation tonight.
I'll be there. That's cool.
You have to test out our accessibility.
What's happening? What's happening?
I'm wanting to do the.
Oh, okay.
President Torpe, members of the Board of Trustees, friends and neighbors, I'm Catherine Sullivan from the Community Relations Committee. The committee seeks to honor those people or organizations who bring joy to South Orange, who do something that improves South Orange, be they residents or people who work in the village. Tonight, we are going to honor the South Orange Community Garden.
I have my shovel.
I didn't bring mine, is that?
Well, I could have warned you. Gardens continue to fascinate and create pleasure, not only for garden enthusiasts, but for those of us just passing by. The showy colors, the wonderful smells, the mouth-watering vegetables and fruits with their promise of tasty meals, give pleasure to all. One might safely say that gardens go back to the very beginning of time, from the Garden of Eden, through the Hanging Gardens of Babylon, to the South Orange Community Gardens. Quite a stretch, I realize, but all of them have something in common, because all of them brought something to the community and brought the community together. They brought pleasure to the viewer. Yet how many people stop to consider the blood, sweat, and tears that go into the growing of the gardens? The hours of work in the sun, the produce, whose lovely sights, five, and the hours of work and the produce and their lovely sights. Five years ago, an ambitious group of residents, working with the village, fenced in an undeveloped space off Third Street to build an area of 49 separate plots for the use of resident volunteers. These plots were to be leased each year for $70 for residents to plant and harvest. All of the gardens are organic, meaning no pesticides are used. The village provides a water system which runs from the street to the gardens. The vegetables feed hungry families, and a portion of the crop is bundled and delivered to the local food pantries. Speaking of hungry families, I was told that certain varmints found their way around the fence, under the fence, and got to the crops. This necessitated the digging of a deep trench with a webbing fence which seemed to cut off access to the varmints. Where there is a will, there is a way. Now, as we enter the fifth year, the garden project has grown. Many of the individual gardeners are still at work, but new folks have joined each year, reinforcing the sense of community spirit and neighborliness. In my 45 years as a resident of South Orange, I have seen that spirit grow, and it's been a joy. An executive board oversees the gardens and makes additions to the project. They run educational classes at the beginning of each season to help newcomers reinforce and reinforce the old comers, or longtime growers, I should say. Among future plans are a drip irrigation system and hydroponic gardens. It is my great pleasure and honor to present this plaque to the South Orange Community Gardens. And would John Shade please come up?
Thank you, my friend.
Okay, I'll get out of your way.
I brought up my friend Diana Ullman, who's such a great resource for us on the community garden. She's part of a small but dedicated group that puts the garden together, but really I'm here representing all of the gardeners who get together and try to make something special every year in our garden over on Third Street on land that the town lets us use and that the town does help us out quite a bit. I just want to recognize Tommy Machetti over at the Department of Public Works, who's always a big help for me, Diane Travers, and Kate Schmidt over at the Rec Department. And I just want to thank you guys on the board specifically for supporting us. You know, one of the previous boards started out with this idea, and we all worked together to make it into a really great project. And I always like to say the coolest thing was when I went on Google Earth and looked on the satellite view, and now you can see it from, up from a satellite, which is pretty cool. And it's a lot of fun, it's a lot of work, and we're just really proud to be part of South Orange, and we really appreciate the fact that the town sees us as an asset, and we're going to continue to work with you guys to make the garden something that you guys can be proud of and that all of us can be proud of. Just to let everyone know, the garden is open to any South Orange resident. We do have some spots available, and we look forward to having anybody come down and certainly come for a visit, and anyone's welcome to register. We'd love to have you. If the weather holds out, we hope to be open in the next week or two, and so we look forward to another great season. Does anyone have any questions about the garden?
John, if somebody's interested in getting a plot, where would they go to find information or register?
Okay, you can go to the Baird Center and register. They have information for you there in a printed form. You can also go on Facebook and search for South Orange Community Garden, and there's some information on our Facebook page there. But you can just go down to the Baird, and they have all that information for you. Okay? Thanks again, you guys. We really appreciate this recognition, and we look forward to working with you guys for another five years and another five years beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and everybody at the community garden, and again, the Community Relations Committee for presenting us with another exceptional villager this month. I keep thinking you might run out one day, but I don't think that's going to happen, not in this town. So thank you guys for that. At this time, I would like to ask Beth Doherty from the Board of Education to come up. She's going to give us just a brief overview of where the school board is at with the budget.
Thank you, President Torpe. When I was here in January asking for your support on the resolution regarding state aid, you asked me to come back to give a report on the school budget, so I'm happy to do that tonight. We passed, the Board of Ed passed the preliminary budget at our meeting this past Monday, the 17th. It has been approved by the county superintendent, so our next step will be to hold a public hearing at our board meeting on April 28th, and then at that time to levy the tax to support the budget for the 1415 school year. So as I predicted in January, we did come in at a 2% tax increase, including debt service the all in is 2.0 through three. That includes, that's as close an estimate as we can get, the bonds will be sold in April, but that's based on a very good estimate of the debt service. What this included, a reduction in staff of 15.3 personnel, reductions in non-personnel costs of $670,000, and then some revised budget assumptions where we, you know, allowed less when we were estimating for health benefits, we allowed less when we're benefiting for out-of-state, out-of-district tuition placements, things that we have to estimate to make sure we have sufficient cash flow. We're estimating for things that are, you know, 15 months out, and so we took a very conservative approach for those to meet this budget. So even with those reductions, it takes the 2% tax increase just to try to keep our educational program whole. And what this does is it represents only a 1.27% increase in spending. So it's not a 2% increase in spending, it's just because our state aid has stayed relatively flat for so many years, it becomes a smaller and smaller percentage of our budget, that as these costs increase, we have to support it through the tax levy as opposed to the same proportion through state aid. We did receive a little bit more this year, $140,000. $70,000 was what was called for park readiness. Park is the partnership to assess readiness for college and career. It's the new online state testing that'll begin next year. $70,000 is such a drop in the bucket, it's almost an insult. I mean, we're happy to have the money, but we spent $475,000 last year just to get about a third of the technology in-house. So yes, it's something, but it's really very close to an unfunded mandate. Likewise, we received $70,000 for what the governor's calling growth aid. So everybody basically got $20 per student in both categories across the board, like every district. That's how that worked out. So the tax impact for the average assessed house in South Orange, now this is based on the tax collectors, the county tax assessor's numbers from last year, we don't have them for 2014, but for last year, is $239 per average South Orange house, and based on last year's number, that average house is assessed at $460,799. So you can just gauge it from there. If your house is twice as much, your tax impact is twice as much. So while we're doing everything we can to reduce our spending, and I still don't see tax increases of less than 2% in our foreseeable future, we're showing shortfalls to the tune of 2.8 million again next year. That's on top of all the cuts we've already made. You know, this is like our sixth year of recession budgeting. After that, it's 5 million, then it grows to 9 million, it just grows, not exponentially, but it grows very quickly. So I don't see relief from a 2% tax increase, which would include major cuts unless we see major changes, like, you know, a completely different influx of state aid, which we are working on, but is such an uphill battle. A reining in of health premium costs, a reining in of out-of-state, out-of-district tuition costs, both of those rising over 10%, when each one, 10%, represents about a million dollars, it represents about a percentage of tax increase. And also, I really, I've said this before in meetings, but I really strongly urge both South Orange, and I'll talk to Maplewood later, that, you know, the new developments we have in town are fantastic, and I know we need to give incentives to developments to get them to come, but I just, I really urge you to really think about when pilots are given two new developments, that does not increase the commercial ratables, that means the tax base, that the school portion of the budget is going on is not going to get any bigger. So as we increase our budget by 2%, that's on the backs of the same group of people, and the burden gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So I know it's a fine line, and it's hard to figure out, I just beg you to please keep that in mind, because there won't be any relief in sight unless we see major changes at the state level, but we also have some control at the local level in expanding our commercial base. So with that brief overview, all of these documents have been sent to you today. You received the ones from our March 4th presentation, these are the updated presentations from March 11th, which initially we were reducing 18.5 staff, and we reduced that to 15.5 staff by changing some of our other budget assumptions, like, you know, budgeting tighter on healthcare so that we could increase our, put back a staff person, basically. Any questions?
Yes.
Sure.
You mentioned an increase per household dollar of $200.
$239 for the year based on the annual, an average assessed value.
That could be misleading to someone who is listening, doesn't understand. That's just the increment or the increase.
Correct.
What is the, do you have an average total of, in dollars, what each household will be responsible for?
No, because I don't know what the average.
Is it like $10,000 a year? Is it like 15?
I think that's something you, as the South Orange Board, would have a better handle on than.
Barry, do you have an answer?
I do.
I don't, I mean, I could probably find it.
It's 50% of the overall tax, so 56, 57%.
It's closer to 60% of the overall tax.
Right. Yeah, it's the major portion of the tax.
Yeah.
Right, so that $239, and that's based on last year's number. Like every year, the county tax assessor gives the school district the actual numbers that we use for the calculation.
Howard, do you know what the average tax per household is? Okay.
That's on top of what they paid last year. And also, the thing is, the school tax is split over two years, so it's very complicated to figure out, like, how much is coming in for the second half of 2014 and how much will be the first half of 2015? Because our increase is on a school year versus the property taxes, which are on the calendar year, so.
Have you, one of the cost drivers we have no control over is the insurance and health insurance and pension and areas like that. And I don't know if you can answer this question, or even if it's applicable, but the Affordable Healthcare Act, is there any benefit, or are you looking at incorporating that into controlling costs? Is that allowed in your environment?
So I can't answer the specifics of that. I know our business administrator is very on top of all the rules and regulations with the Affordable Healthcare Act. I just don't have all the details available.
All right, thank you.
Just to ask two quick questions.
Sure.
The student projections, is that number still increasing? Is it leveled off on how many students you're expecting in the school system?
So right now, it's more of a bubble going through the school system, but the actual enrollment seems to be fairly steady for next year. We did have, one thing we've gotten for the last several years, I'm sure the township gets waivers on the 2% tax cap from the state. We do too. We get them for increasing enrollment as well as excessive costs, it rises in health premiums. So this year, we did get money for enrollment increases. We'll project to get a little bit next year, because they lag a year. Next year's numbers will be based on what our enrollment numbers were previously. But we've left $2.8 million of taxing authority in waivers and banked cap on the table by limiting ourselves to the 2% tax increase. $1 million is about the equivalent of a one percentage tax increase. So based on the state and what they have said, this is how much money you need to provide a thorough and efficient education to your students, it would have been a 4.8% tax increase, but we held it at two. Next year, we have about, almost a million dollars of that expiring, because once you bank it, it's only there for three years. Next year, we'll have about $1. we'll have about 1.9. This year, it was closer to 2.9.
I have a, oh, you have a question? I just have a request.
One question. Are there any major capital improvements for any of the buildings in South Orange?
So, we just improved, the Board of School Estimate just approved our list of capital projects, and it's things, roof replacements, some boiler upgrades. As far as the buildings in South Orange, which specific ones, those improvements were scattered around. I think there was some roof repair at South Orange Middle School.
Montrose.
Pardon me?
Montrose.
And Montrose, yeah, the Montrose building, refurbishing that, which actually, right now, we once again had to reject all bids because they came in higher than what we had anticipated. So, that building will no longer open in the 14, 15 school year. We'll see it open in the 15, 16 school year. So, we will support the current preschool programming that we have in existing locations throughout the district right now. Right now, they're at Jefferson School.
All right. Thank you.
Can you speak to your projections that go out to 2019? It looks like you have between $2 to $3 a year increase.
You gotta speak into the mic. They can't hear you.
It's dead.
It's dead.
His mic is broken. Okay. Are you talking about for debt service or for our budget?
No, total budget.
For the operating budget? Yes.
It's broken. No, for the total budget. You're going out to, what, 117 million dollars in 2019?
Are you including debt service on that?
Yes.
Or, yes. So, every year, every three years, we're on a bonding cycle where we have big master plans for our capital improvements. We recently, a few years ago, had a huge facilities assessment done, which we hadn't had done in about 10, 15 years. So, we had another one done that takes us out through 2025, 2030, and we prioritize the work so that every three years, we go out to bond, which keeps the debt service relatively level. It goes up and down a little bit. It used to be around 3 million, then it was up around 3 and 1/2 million. Now, it's getting closer to 4 million, but it's still as far as a percentage of our operating budget, it actually is staying the same or coming down. And that's really because, I mean, you know what it's like to have buildings you have to take care of. We have, you know, all of our schools and our maintenance building, most of them are very old, so it takes a lot to keep them in good shape. And with enrollment increases, we are putting in addition on Maplewood Middle School. That's almost done. We've applied for state grants. We had millions of dollars' worth in state grants to assist with some of this capital work, which is very exciting coming up. And for the ones we did not get grants for, we have applied to get a debt service aid, which is where we get 40% reimbursed to us. The grants, we get the money upfront. We don't have to bond for it, so...
I have just one request. Since the tax burden from the school budget is almost 60% of the tax burden on the residents, I would appreciate, and when I say "I," maybe the whole board, that we have someone, either you or someone from the board, come before us once a quarter to give us an update, what's going on regarding the budget, the school system, or any other issues, and that we would have an opportunity to ask questions. So, if you could indulge us by committing to being here once a quarter or a representative, I would appreciate that, because you are, again, 60% of our tax burden.
So, I think that's something we need to talk about further, that I completely understand your desire for the information, Maplewood as well. We also, we have the State of the District report every year in January, which is really a summary of how the district is doing, and it's the superintendent gives the report, and there's an open, you know, there's an opportunity for a question-and-answer session, and the trustees and the Maplewood Township Committee members are invited to that every year. So, I would encourage everyone to come to that for one of the meetings, just because it's a big production to produce that report. It's the best information you'll get, much more thorough than me or a representative coming before you quarterly. So, I would say that's one, and then we can make sure that everybody's kept apprised of what's going on throughout the rest of the year.
That's wonderful, and a comprehensive meeting that we can attend, but that's at the beginning of the year.
Right.
Fiscal year. But, I would not want to just wait for, once a year, and I really think that we deserve a representative coming here. Many of us, just like you, have responsibilities. Many of us work full-time. We are, we attend this meeting twice a month, and then we sit on other committees. So, to, you have us all here together in one spot. So, and I understand that you may be time-challenged, because you have a lot of responsibilities. So, if we schedule it, if you or a representative could come here, again, because a significant part of our taxes go to educate our children, I would appreciate that.
Just, you know, I met with Ms. Doherty last fall, I guess right around the election time, and, you know, because I'd said it'd been many years since we had anybody here, and I do appreciate you coming, because we did discuss that you would come, at least start coming again with an annual report on the budget and another annual report on the state of the school type of thing, which would give us twice a year, which I thought was, you know, I think would actually satisfy me personally. But, I think the point is well-made, that we need to hear, and we should all go to the, to the meeting that you have every year, whatever that is, so...
Okay, so, I can take this back to the board. So, maybe it's twice a year, plus knowing that you can come to the State of the District. I do think quarterly, because then there would be the reciprocal at Maplewood Middle, at Maplewood Township Committee. You know, that's eight additional meetings for Board of Ed members. I mean, that's a lot. Yeah, so, because we all have big schedules, like everybody else, yeah.
Oh, it's on. Just four points. First of all, I wanted to congratulate you and the Board of Education for the increase in the state aid. I heard from Mr. Bennett that a lot of districts remain static. They didn't see an increase or decrease, and a lot of districts lost money. So, I think that your efforts on behalf of the Board of Education, all the work that you did to address the funding formula, probably resulted in the 3% or so increase that the district saw. So, congratulations to all of you. And I did send out my letter to all the people that you noted.
Thank you.
The next thing, and this is just a point of inquiry, you had stated that $239 per assessed value in South Orange, based on 2013, roughly 460,800. Do you know what the number is for Maplewood, their approximate as well?
Yeah, so their approximate is 199, and their approximate assessed house, I didn't write that down, because I was gonna take that to Maplewood, but it's higher. It's under, I want to say 450 or 460, 460,000, somewhere in that ballpark.
60,000. So, what...
And once again, these are last year's numbers, so they will change for this year.
The other thing, there was just one, and you addressed it, and I think philosophically, we tend to agree about this with respect to pilots. Could you also speak to whether Maplewood has, with their piloted properties, offered voluntary contributions to the school district? I know at the same time, we have developments going on, they do too, and I'm not familiar with what they have done.
They have one piloted property, and I think they're considering a second. I'm not sure if that's been finalized, but as far as, and when I'm talking about piloted properties, I'm only talking about the ones that are at the governing body's discretion, not the ones that have to be exempt from taxes.
Sure.
Due to, you know, charitable status and things like that. Just the new developments, where it's an option. But, no, so far, we have not received any kind of voluntary contribution from any pilot in either town.
Are they considering, do you have any idea if they're considering one with the new post office site redevelopment?
That will not have a pilot.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
As far as I know, like, I'm not on the Township Committee, but I have been told it won't, so...
One thing I would suggest, and I know that we've all probably had separate conversations, whether it be with Maplewood or the Board of Education, as I said when we first passed our budget, the totality of what we're dealing with, I don't think for most residents, it matters to them if we come in at, you know, .93, and the schools come in at 2.03. It's the totality of what we're doing. And with the school district, as Trustee Davis Ford has so eloquently said, is such a big portion of where the taxes go, that it is certainly worthwhile for Maplewood, South Orange, and the Board of Education to figure this out together, because people average it out. It really doesn't matter where it's coming from. And so, as we're looking at these new developments, again, it doesn't change your budget, but you don't have the ability to generate revenue on your own. You're not gonna develop properties yourself. That falls on us. So, the sooner that we can have some type of conversation with all three groups, get us together and figure out what our policies are, because in the same token, I would say that Maplewood fares better than South Orange in this funding formula for the schools. And so, if I were making an argument to our own tax base, I would say, these pilots work out better for you if you're only looking at you. So, I highly suggest that the more transparent we are about what these real numbers are, again, my question to what Maplewood spends, put it all out on the table for the public to understand, and then maybe, you know, we move away from pilots, contributions, whether they're voluntary, whether we don't do it. What is our policy as a governing body as it relates to new developments, new revenue, and whether or not it is within our purview to contribute to the schools? And if we can agree to that, I would like to see us have that meeting, and perhaps in a public setting between Maplewood, South Orange, and the Board of Ed.
Yeah, we had some initial conversations that...
Yeah, we've had smaller groups where it was, it was the mayors and the finance chairs that were there.
And the Board of Ed.
And the Board of Ed, and the business administrators, those that could make it. Like, not everybody could make that meeting. And there was the intention to have ongoing meetings in that smaller setting to really, you know, hash things out, like what is the bigger picture? What is the impact? What are the existing policies and practices in place? I think that route might be better initially, and then to prepare for coming around the table, I think, just to make sure it's as functional as possible. It's an awfully big meeting if you pull all three of the governing bodies together at once.
Has there been a meeting, though, between South Orange, Finance, well, not just with the Board of Ed, but with Maplewood present, all three groups there?
Yes.
Is there a recommendation coming to us at some point?
Well, I think we had talked about some of these things, and we had gotten a little bit more on the same page on a couple of these issues, and at least gotten a better understanding, I think, of the, I guess, the goals of each organization kind of in this setting. And we definitely had talked about having some follow-up conversations, and we should, you know, we're definitely interested in doing that, so maybe that's something we can schedule soon. I mean, it'd be great to get to a point where we can make some larger recommendations back to our governing bodies, and you guys back to the Board of Education. Maybe there's, you know, a little bit of a plan of action that we can do there.
I guess, just my hope from it, is that there's something consistent and predictable from both this governing body and Maplewood's, because I know that they have some good projects going on. They probably have a lot of area, more so than we do, on areas that can be redeveloped or developed. I know, South Orange, we're being very aggressive in some of our opportunities here, and not knowing what the other person is doing, and how that has an impact on what you're doing, is a little, especially as a new board member, a little confusing for me. It's a little bit easier to just figure out what our policies are and then stick to them, so we're not guessing.
I think what came out of that meeting was both South Orange and Maplewood were in sync with, specifically with the pilots.
What do you mean in sync with pilots?
In sync, from a policy perspective, we were both taking the same view.
That we would do them and not make contributions to the schools.
Correct.
I think there was maybe a difference in when pilots are awarded between the two towns. And as far as, I think, I agree, it was both in sync, that the townships weren't gonna...
Philosophically, we were in agreement.
Would not make requirements, but there was a, let's explore what the developers might be able to do in a good neighbor partnership type of thing.
And there was definitely an interest, and I think an understanding, you know, from the municipal side, which I hope was helpful for you guys, which was that, you know, we understand the reason for using a pilot, right? And it's not just to make people pay less taxes, but it's to encourage development where otherwise, development wouldn't have happened. And that's really, that's really the crux of it, because if developers are ready to build, and they're ready to do it without a pilot, and obviously, we talked about the challenges of figuring out, how do you, how does one really know that in this kind of market? But, I think, you know, we kind of recommitted that, this is not something that we're just kind of tossing around to anybody who wants to build, but it's only, it's only for use in places where we think that there is a strong likelihood that, without it, someone, we wouldn't get interest in the project.
And in redevelopment zones.
Right. And so, that's something that we need to internalize also, is just an attitude. I think people are probably all on the same page. They're not just, you know, giving pilots out willy-nilly, but that we could have a better understanding and make sure to communicate that with you guys about, you know, when we think we need it. And us in Maplewood are probably on a similar page. About that, I think that we just have more opportunity for the kind of redevelopment that would lend itself towards that than Maplewood does.
And we have a greater burden because of the university as well.
Right.
As being one of the non-taxing, taxable real estate pieces. The other thing that came out of that meeting was that we said that we wanted to meet again, and the other was that we had discontinued the liaison meetings, and we did want to meet again. And I don't think we ever came to closure or planned when we were going to do that again.
Yeah, I initiated some emails, and I couldn't get a consensus, so I'll restart that process.
Internally, on the Board of Ed?
Uh, no, to, externally, it wasn't to a large group, but I did reach out to try to, not necessarily the ed liaison, but to get together with, kind of to reconvene the group that had initially met about pilots and the impact. So, I'll start that process again to make sure, whether it's ed liaison, or whether it's, you know, the board president and both mayors, like, whatever it is, just to start the conversation up again. Because the point of me bringing it up tonight is, a lot of times, it's spoken to in terms of, well, there's only supposed to be, you know, a handful 10 kids, you know, in the development side, which our demographer actually predicts it'll be over 50 kids, say, at Third and Valley. But, despite the number of children, it's just the idea that, you know, we're gonna need to raise our taxes, and if it looks like it's gonna be 2%, and if the base across which that burden is to be spread, if that base is an increase, then that's just a bigger and bigger and bigger increase on the same set of homeowners. It's not until we see the base expand, the taxable base, will that 2% be less painful, be less than 239. Like, it'll be a much smaller dollar amount, because you spread it over a wider base. But, I know it's a hard call. You want to make sure you get the developers in here. I just want to make sure, people say, you know, it's, there's no additional expense to the school district. Like, that's not the way it works.
You know, I think your point's well-made, and I don't disagree with it to some extent, but part of the conversation then would have to include the formula for funding between the two towns, because right now, South Orange is basically shafted compared to Maplewood. And I think the number is, we pay $4,000 more per...
More than that.
Over $4,000.
And that's a state conversation, like that, or a county conversation.
But, it's one of the reasons why, when South Orange does a pilot, it's much more dramatic for us than it is for Maplewood. And the formula is so unfair, and we do have, tried, we have tried to have the conversation with the state, but Maplewood has to be a willing partner in that conversation. I know it's not for you, but it's for us to do, to get them to go along on the same page, and it goes into the whole conversation, why don't we just consolidate? And, you know, it's, but it's a real, it's a real key point for us, and that, because that funding formula, it's a key point the public has to understand. If that funding formula was fair and based on population and not on assessed values of the property, it would make a lot more sense to do what you're saying. But, because it is funding formula being so unfair, a pilot actually helps us much more than it helps Maplewood, and I understand it doesn't help the school. It doesn't necessarily hurt the school, but it doesn't help the school budget. So, I just want to make that point. You don't have to respond to it, and I'm...
We can definitely take this offline, but one request to the trustee Levinson, to the Finance Committee. Back to your point that Maplewood and South Orange, both philosophically or to some degree, stated that, that we're gonna continue on the path of offering the tax abatements, and that this worked out for us. I think that's a board conversation. So, if that's something, that needs to come to us.
It is a different construct. It is that we have the same policy or objective of what the pilot was for, and the impact of the pilot. It is for the redevelopment of the villages.
Absolutely, but that, to one last point, and I'm sorry to belabor the point, but I do agree with you, Beth, is that that does not impede our ability to make voluntary contributions to the school district. Point blank, you need pilots and tax abatements to, excuse me, incentivize the type of development you want. On that token, absolutely, 100%.
And that's where we're in.
But, as a result of that pilot, it changes the formula by which the percentages of what entity gets what. As a part of a pilot, the school gets zero. That does not stop us from saying, we, South Orange, or we, Maplewood, will be making a voluntary contribution to the school district to offset that budget.
But who would...
Whether it increases ours to, say, we levy now at 1.25, and the schools are now at, you know, 1.9, that's just the way that it works.
And getting back to what Mark was alluding to, we pay $20,000 per student to the district. Maplewood pays $12,000 per student. And there has to be some equity that occurs in that area.
100% agree.
You wanted to say something? I see you bobbing and weaving, trying to get a word in.
This was actually several topics ago, but in the discussion of a next meeting, so to speak, one of the things I would want to have added to that discussion is, vis-à-vis going to the state and looking at the state funding formulas and re-looking at them, is there more that we, as a governing body, can do? And I think we would want to try to... to work together more with Maplewood. I think, to some degree, we are at a disadvantage where many other communities have a single municipal entity and a single school entity. We are a bit bifurcated, and I think that doesn't necessarily help us as far as representing to the state, and-
Right, so I did testify at the Senate Budget Hearing about the state aid, the resolution that we had passed, and that Maplewood and South Orange, both of you, passed the resolution as well. I don't think anything's going to change for this budget cycle, but what we did do is get it out there in front of the Senate Budget Appropriations Committee, and also, we're working with our local legislators to really try to get it in front of David Heskey, the new Commissioner of Education, to say, you know, once this budget cycle is done, that we need, there needs to be transparency behind how state aid is distributed. There's the School Funding Reform Act, the formula, but it really appears that partial funding, this is what I said back in January, is not done according to the formula. There's different decisions that are not transparent, you can't figure out what they are, that are being made to partially distribute the aid, because they don't have enough money to fully form, fully fund the formula. So that's a conversation we will definitely, you know, we're staying in touch with Myla Jaycee's office and Senator Ruiz, who's the Chair of the Education Committee. She's also on that Senate Budget and Appropriations Committee meeting, keeping in touch with her, just to keep this topic on the table so that once the Assembly and the Senate get through the budget period, and they're preparing for next year, that we can really make sure this conversation is in the forefront in, you know, summer, early fall, so that we're not back here next January with resolutions screaming about state, I mean, we might be, but hopefully, we won't be.
Well, thank you for coming in and giving us an update, and I think, you know, whatever we can do outside of these follow-up conversations to voice our support in, you know, in tandem with you guys and with Maplewood, to the state, we all know that that's where the real changes really need to be made. So whatever we can do to help with that, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks, Seth.
At this time, I would like to ask Frank Delgado from Essex County to come up, who's
got an update to share with us.
Good evening. Frank Delgado, municipal liaison from Essex County to South Orange. Just wanted to bring some information, and I had given a supply of the information to the deputy clerk prior to the meeting, but renouncing the cherry blossom festival, believe it or not, spring is coming. And April 5th is the first-
Are you sure? Can I hold you to that?
I have to tell you, if you've never witnessed the cherry blossom festival in Branch Brook Park, it's something to be seen. And you catch it on the right day, when all the trees are in bloom, it's amazing. There's over 4,000 cherry blossom trees of every variety, shape, size, color, anything you can imagine there. So April 5th starts the bike race, and then April 6th is the 10K run. And there's a whole bunch of events the following weekends that come up, right through April 13th, is the Bloom Fest, which is a family event. There's bands, there's rides, there's all kinds of events in Branch Brook Park in Newark. With that also, we have a, this year, for the first time, a Parks Guide. It has information on every park in the county. And on the back, there's a map, it shows you where all the parks are, but information in here includes the summer concert series, the actual dates, all of the different events, and all of the different park venues, Kip's Castle, there's Friday night movies, all of the golf information is in here, fishing derbies, everything that goes on in the parks is in here. Has contact numbers and registration information for a lot of the different events, music festivals, things of that nature. So I'll leave these copies with the clerk.
Thank you.
And open for any other questions you may have.
Yes. You only brought one?
No, I brought a whole box.
Oh, good.
They're in the deputy clerk's trunk. We loaded them in the trunk.
In fact, you have to hand out 100 of them after the meeting.
For the residents, that you could keep in your temporary quarters over-
My attempt at a little living.
Can I just ask you one quick question about the project going through the S-curves?
Yes, sir.
Can you just give a timeline on what that is, because I keep getting people asking me, and the highlights of that project?
Sure, sure. The project has started, if you've noticed, there's some tree clearing going on. The roadway will never be closed, there'll always be one lane open in both directions. It will not shut down for construction. We anticipate it's going to last, I think it's going to last 20 to 24 months, the project. And the purpose of the project is overall safety, because if you've ever been driving down there and say in a snowstorm, and there's an accident, the whole road closes, and there's really no other way around the reservation. So in order to make, you know, the free flow of traffic and a safer flow of traffic, that's why this project is being undertaken.
Could I ask one thing? I don't know how this is done, but I understand there's a lot of constraints when construction is being done, but can we make sure that there is a place, because there are a fair amount of recreationalism, I appreciate that you brought the park stuff. I, for one, bike up through those S-curves, and it can be, you know, during this construction period, very dangerous, because there's not only lack of space, but there's construction materials and stuff that's left behind that makes it very dangerous for a bike or a runner. So can we just let the construction teams know to ideally, you know, keep some space there, but also make sure that they're clearing wake, because, you know, cars can go over branches and stuff, but it's a major challenge for bike runners.
I will get that information to the Department of Public Works. There will be a monitor on the project daily-
Thank you.
-from the county. So I will get that information to them, to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Delgado, so I understand that part of the safety for the S-curve project is that they will be straightened out, they will no longer be S-curves, or?
Correct. The intent of it is to take away the, I mean, it's still going to have somewhat of a bend to it, it's just the way the road goes, and you can't go so much into the reservation, but the majority of that S-curve will be eliminated from that area.
And so the drainage will be also reconstructed, or handled, or built?
Correct. It's all part of the construction project.
I noticed that a significant amount of trees have been removed, so are there plans to replace the trees that have been removed?
Yes, there will be replanting. Once the season warrants, there'll be obviously smaller trees, but there will be replanting.
Trustee Clark, does this have anything to do with what you wanted to talk about later on in the meeting? Is this related, or is it totally separate?
Totally separate.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I know at the end of the meeting, we have Mark Hartwick from the Parking Authority who is here. I definitely don't want to make him wait for the whole meeting.
No.
So, Mark, if you'd like to come up and, and give us your update, that would be great.
So, two weeks ago, we launched our new operation in transitioning resident commuter parkers to six primary locations. I forwarded to the board members earlier today a utilization survey chart that highlights where most people are parking. About 75% of the average of 100 parkers per day are availing themselves of the Old Village Hall Lot 4, the Firehouse Lot 3, and the Waterlands driveway and parks. A smaller number are utilizing North Ridgewood Road, a couple on Mead Street, and no takers on Meadowbrook. We launched this with signage. We staffed the locations, Village Hall Lot 3, Waterlands, with officers, starting at 6:00 AM. They're there through, just initially, they're there all the way up until 11:00 AM. Resident commuters are, those spaces are being reserved and held for them up until 11:00. They can park as early as 5:00. We've been scaling that back somewhat, the staff coverage, we're still out there each day, up until about 10:00 AM, currently. We're at the start of the third week. I think it sorted itself out fairly quickly. The SOPA board had met on Tuesday, the 11th. We had three trustees and two people from the public who came, and we had a very good roundtable discussion about everything that had led up to that transition, and very good suggestions going forward. One of those suggestions that we will be implementing is offering a combo pass, a parking combo jitney pass. We will be sending out an email tomorrow. The board was also sent that. There's been at least one trustee comment. We will tweak it a little bit to clarify a couple of things in that letter. If anybody has any other suggestions, please get them to me before tomorrow. That will be an offer to any resident permit holder to avail themselves of one free bus pass for the remainder of the year at no cost. We're issuing one free pass per permit holder. If there are two commuters to a household commuting on one permit, we will offer the second resident in that household a prorated half-price permit for the balance of the year. And that's a, that's an initiative that I'm sure will carry forward into the next new year, probably under the same terms during the duration of the Third Street construction. And then, once that construction for that garage is complete and available to the parking public, we'll reevaluate the cost of that permit, but I imagine that will be a mainstay, but at a price at some point. With any new operation, you have to assess it and analyze it on a daily basis. We've been doing that. By the third day of the first week, we had started to let Waterland Park parkers utilize the driveway. It was only about half full with Waterland driveway users. So that's worked out very well. You'll see the numbers, that more people have shifted to the driveway, makes it a little less of a walk. We'll also be assessing some additional signage, probably starting tomorrow. That will be put out, that will address that Lot 3 is full. We'll put those up in various locations, probably on Third Street, so that people don't go in that direction unnecessarily after a certain hour. That may help them with their drive-through of that area unnecessarily. At the moment, there are some other things that came out of our board meeting discussion that we're pursuing to look at. Everything from a larger bus to accommodate more ridership on our jitney routes. Once we send this email tomorrow, we will probably get some positive feedback on that. It has the potential to increase our ridership on, specifically on the Newstead Route, which we're already busting at the seams. We're running two buses there on certain routes to pick up backup over ridership there. So that we'll have to address as we go forward. We'll see what the demand actually is. I don't think it's going to be anything we can't handle in the short term, but in the long term, the village and the authority are going to need to look at larger capacity buses. I've already initiated some inquiries to one of our vendors about a 3740 passenger bus. Currently, what's available through them is one that's priced up around $130,000. I've asked them to crunch the numbers, come back with a one and a two-year lease, and then also to give me a municipal lease-to-purchase option also, over a five-year period. I'll stop there for a moment, and entertaining questions from the board?
Yeah, thank you. I had a quick question, which I'd love to kind of hear your thoughts on, which is, it seems as though, with the numbers that you provided, even just from looking at some of the spaces, the amount of space that was prepared to accommodate all the commuters, is that less people total are taking their car down? Like, pretty substantially?
I'd say your number is roughly around the 30 to 40.
So, I mean, that's, that's very interesting. I mean, so, these people, we can assume, are still going to work the same way they were every day. Has the jitney ridership gone up, or are people, are people, you know, carpooling, or are they walking? Do you have any idea that, you know, there's this huge chunk that just now is somehow getting there another way?
I don't have the ridership post and pre-evaluation yet for you to respond to that directly. I think there are a few more drop-offs in the morning, people getting rides. I think with, I don't think we're seeing a lot of people walk yet, so that's probably also going to be a factor in the coming months. I will get those figures, though, on the ridership.
That'd be very interesting, thank you.
And so with the drop-offs, are we experiencing any issues? I mean, there's, we've always had a concern along Sloan, you know, about drop-offs. Has this made it worse?
To date, no. There's no, there's no issues as far as log jams, or traffic concerns, or safety issues on that increase of people being dropped off. Probably because it is spread out a little bit over a variety of train schedules. I mean, the heaviest is that 7/730 timeframe, but we're not, we're not hearing any feedback of that nature.
And a question, actually, that I raised at, I guess it was our last trustee meeting, was for the non-commuters, for residents that are parking. So we've, now, by adding Mead and Ridgewood and Meadowbrook potentially, how has that impacted our non-commuters, but residents who would normally park to, let's say, go into town? Have we noticed there's just that much less spot? So are we getting any frustration, or are you hearing anything?
No, I don't think there's been an increase in the demand for non-commuting residents who have a need to go into the city periodically.
No, not to go into the city. No, my point is for non-commuters. So what we've done is we've taken places where residents who are not going into the city used to potentially park, whether it be Mead, Ridgewood, several places, and now-
If you look at the, if you look, trustee, if you look at the Mead numbers, we're averaging two blue tags there a deck.
But that's my point.
So, we're not taking space away from-
Well, we are. Before 11:00 AM, there's only two commuters using it, but it's, we're not allowing any non-commuting resident to use it.
Okay. So the way I want to phrase this is that the village didn't change any ordinances. So whatever the pre-existing ordinance was to the launch of this operation are still in play. What we've done is, we've put it out to the resident community that we're trying to reserve and hold these spaces. It's not an ordinance, it's a parking policy at the moment. So therefore, what you're seeing, and if you'll notice, we didn't change the signage anywhere yet, because this whole thing is so fluid. We don't want to have to go out and change all the signage. So by virtue of the fact that if the demand on Mead Street was that it filled it up, then we'd have an issue. But we wanted to do the wait-and-see and see how this played out over the first few weeks. That being said, the numbers are showing us that we made the right choice. We're putting up mobile signs that we can put up and take down. It's not prohibiting the general public from parking. We haven't had any calls from anybody saying, hey, I want to take a walk around Duck Park, and I can't park here. That's not the case. I think people are still doing that. It's just-
Okay, that was my question.
The allocation is shared.
I think, I think the only concern, you know, going forward, or one of the concerns going forward will be about when the, when the spring activities start, you know, for baseball, football, baseball, soccer, whatever, and the camp in the summertime, we have to make sure. But it appears from the numbers that that won't be an issue, a real issue.
I don't believe it will be. I mean, we had allocated 40 spaces in the Waterlands Park proper. We're averaging under 10 there. I don't see that that's going to grow. I think as this moves forward, and other things come into play, even if it's in the next two, three months, we'll see probably no issue there, hopefully, at all with recs programs.
I will say, from the comments on the train, my guess is that some people will start to park there again, that some people just wanted to give it a couple of weeks to shake out, and have either a spouse or a friend drive them to the train station, someone else pick them up, and that when they figure out, you know, the timing and everything, they'll start parking again, and we may see a bump up. And the summertime, of course, is always slower, but, you know, that's my guess.
What we typically see in the spring going into the summer is a drop.
Okay.
So hopefully, that stays true.
And maybe we'll just stay level.
Trustee Clark?
Yeah, my area of concern was also underwaterlands and the driveway, and the fact that, you know, a lot of the people migrated from the actual parking lot to the driveway, but with the change in weather and the sports beginning to kick into gear, I know that- But with the change in weather and the sports beginning to kick into gear, I know that that area is a choke point under normal circumstances without all the cars in the driveway because you can't have cars going in opposite directions, basically, as long as there's parked vehicles there. So, is there any kind of a backup plan or would it be possible to...
Actually, trustee, I've been down there most mornings, and there is enough room for a two-lane passage. Well, that's good. It just slows everybody down. And if there's kids in the area, that's even better. So, if they just slow down, maybe courtesy, let a car pass, that's, you know, it's worked so far. It's not the volume that you're talking about you perceive may be coming. Let's see what happens as we go forward. I don't think it's going to be a choke. I think that Director of Rec had indicated that her biggest concern was the field parking, you know, in the lots itself. So, we've addressed that. If the driveway becomes a choke or an issue, then this board and my board are going to have to put our heads together and come up with some alternatives because we're sort of running out of locations other than what we've laid out at the moment.
There were a couple of other things that we had discussed at that meeting. One of them was to take a survey. Are we still interested in doing a survey of the...
We haven't done the survey yet. I talked to you a little bit about that after the meeting, using the Survey Monkey as a survey option and coming up with some of the questions. What we thought was some of that survey data was geared towards whether or not people would use the jitney.
Correct.
If it was offered. I think what we'd like to do is release the letter, see what the feedback is. We may not have a need for the survey.
Yeah, and the other was an offer to the inactive permit users.
Correct. And that's another option I was going to bring up to the board that we'll go through our list. After we release this email tomorrow, we'll go back and we'll make an offer to any permit holder who's an infrequent commuter. Maybe they're not a regular commuter at all. They're using it less than a dozen times a year. We'll ask them if they want to give up their permit. We'll put it on hold for them, and they'll be offered a spot in the garage when that comes online.
And Leslie, I think one of the other discussion items was the potential of using a carpooling app if there was any interest in...
If we do the survey, we could include that.
Okay. Thank you.
I think there's another IT solution which would be a help, and I know it's a concern, albeit it may not be that frequently, but occasionally, if a driver calls in sick or if there's a breakdown, it would be great to be able to have an app which could notify the rider. So, I don't know if that's something we would consider developing. I can see several things around jitney ridership.
Right. My board also is very interested in an app solution of that type, four alerts, et cetera. We did get together with the village. Adam ran us through the Everbridge. We got on that. We need to move that initiative a little bit further. It's been somewhat sidetracked at the moment, but we will get back to that. Since I'm here and I have a captured audience at the moment, just a couple of quick questions. I had reached out to the clerk's office today. I need the corporation code for the village. If that can be located, it's a 15-digit code. I need that to finalize these two new buses that are coming to us. They need it for the registration and licensing of that. Yeah. I didn't want to jump up when the sturdity was up here, but if you're going to have conversations with the BOE, I would strongly ask them whether or not they have any capital improvement plans for the middle school parking lot. They did a patch job last year. With this past winter, that's pretty much been undone. It's in really, really rough shape. I know they want to put their dollars into academics, but I think that would go a long way to making that school a little bit better than it is. And I know that the village is meeting, or one of your department heads has a meeting scheduled for PSENG to discuss lights. There's a MyAccount system now. The village has the MyAccount system. I just wanted to strongly urge again that all that lights that are out, there are electric lights in the New Jersey Transit lot. I mean, I've been sending them that stuff since last year, so if you'd just put that on their agenda when you meet with them, I'd appreciate it.
Can you repeat that? In the transit lot right now, there's a lot of lights out?
Yeah, and they're all electric lights. The last time PSENG came in, they did some of the electric lights that were in the pedestrian pass-through from Lot 9 out to the avenue next to Bank, is it Chase Bank or Bank of America? But they weren't able to address the ones in the transit lot. So, there's a significant amount of those that are out.
Yeah, that's a problem.
The issue there always seems...
I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis, did you say that the village is aware of that and has shared that with PSENG?
You need to talk into a mic.
Yeah, I'll follow up, but you're talking about right out here, right, wherever we are?
Yes.
Yeah, there, I mean, there's a lot. When you see, you'll see. It's probably easily 30, 40 percent, maybe even close to half of them.
At the western end of the lot, there's five lights out, and three of them are right next to each other, so there is a dark spot there.
Yeah, I had been sending them those requests via their fax system, and then I found out that that changed over to this MyAccount.
This actually goes back a couple of years, because I know we sent, and I had sent emails to Everton Scott about it also as well.
Okay. The SOPA Board had asked me to ask this board if you have any type of a timeline where you might be able to complete the Second Street lot, where the location was the house was built, the house was torn down, but the lot's been sitting there vacant. Even though it's only another 15 spaces, it would add quite a bit to the current situation if we had that online.
Have we talked about it? In Public Works?
Barry, he's asking about the lot on Second Street.
Where the trailers were going to go to expand that?
Yeah.
Right. We're working with that, with the engineer.
Okay. And I know I've already been working with Barry and Adam regarding Sloan Street Lot 10 and the potential that that's going to be your future site of the rescue squad. So, again, to avoid anything that happened in the past here, I'd like to get ahead of that and get a notice out to those commuter parkers notifying them that that is going to go away, and they're going to get absorbed back into the general pool.
Mark, they will have to go to the planning board, so you can...
There's a little time, but...
Yeah, there's definitely time, and we'll keep you in the loop unless and learned from the last experience.
Thank you.
As well as the village hall line?
Well, Barry and I talked about that, and, you know, we're pretty set there for the moment, so that looks good for now. But that still needs to be put out there, I guess, that it's going to be reconfigured. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like to open the meeting up for public comments. I don't know if we have the sign-in sheet up here or not. So, if anybody...
There wasn't anyone.
What's that?
There wasn't anyone that signed in, correct?
No, nobody did?
No.
Okay, so if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak at this time, please come forward. We limit the comments to three minutes, and please just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's 32 Pam Cholley. I live at 234 South Ridgewood here in South Orange. I have a pretty simple question. I'm a new property owner. A lot of my neighbors are new property owners out on South Ridgewood. We up there are kind of unaware of how to get involved on committees in this town. And I've heard the, you know, the village president express that there are open positions on your committees. I personally have submitted an application probably about two, maybe three months ago, called the town clerk, emailed the town clerk, haven't heard back. I mean, is there a vetting process or is there a shrouding? I mean, I'm an education attorney for the city government. I've been in practice for eight years. I think I'm pretty fully versed in government, local government, politics, and think I could make a valuable contribution to one of our committees. I am not sure what's going on, why there's no, you know, response, what committees have openings, how to get involved. I'm kind of the conduit, and I give people information on my street. And for someone who reads all three local papers, tweets with the mayor, treats with other people here, it's really hard to get involved in this town. That's my end.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who has any comments? Okay, I'd like to close public comments. Well, I definitely want to follow up with you. I mean, I would say that hopefully, the getting involved piece, although it doesn't sound like it's been as easy as you want it to be, is easy enough that it's, you can contact us, and I've been in contact with you. I didn't know that you were frustrated waiting for an answer about volunteer applications. If you send me a follow-up email with what you submitted, do people get a confirmation? Do we know when they submit the volunteer application? That's, yeah, that's not a surprise, but anyway, if you follow up with what you are interested in and you just sent it in an email to me, we can follow up with you and we can look back and see if we have your resume, your records on file or anything like that. Yeah, so I can't get into too much of a back-and-forth right now. If you do email me your information, I'll get you information about what's open and what's available. It definitely is changing and dynamic, and so I don't know, for example, off the top of my head, all the positions that are open, which is why we kind of peg for certain, you know, let people submit the applications in and then try and figure out what's open and where we can kind of get people matched to. I do know that just because from the public information and marketing committee we are restarting, there are many open positions on that, but for every single committee and every single board, don't 100% know. But if you do put your interests in an email, I will try and find a place that matches up with what you're interested in. So, we have a little bit of a manual system right now, although that's actually something that we've discussed, is trying to find a better way to allow people to basically, instead of submitting, because you're right, basically, the application process, you get this whole long dropdown menu of committees and boards, and you don't know what's open or what's available or when do they meet or what's going on. And so, what we'd like to try and do is approach that from a little bit of a different perspective and ask people what their interests are and then match those two openings in town. So, we're going to, we're trying to formulate a little bit of a better way to do this that would be a little bit less cumbersome than what you've been going through. But, yeah, please, I know you have my email, I think. So, yeah, if you follow up and just put your interests in there, I will try and follow up on that. Thank you.
I just want to just comment, that disturbs me that she's had such a struggle to volunteer because it really is not reflective of how many people in town as residents have volunteered. We have so many people in so many aspects who are engaged, so I just want to share that with you. So, your experience is disheartening because it's really not reflective of how many people that we've been able to reach out to and engage. As the president said, we have to fix it, and we're working on that.
Yeah, and we have placed a lot of volunteers recently with the Irvington Ave Committee and with some of our land use boards, so there's definitely people coming in. And I would not in any way guarantee that when submitting things with the website and all that, every once in a while, something doesn't get missed, but just follow up with me and we'll try and figure it out. So, next is the approval of minutes. We have minutes from February 10th, special and conference minutes for February 10th and the regular for February 24th. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Schnell. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed abstentions?
I'm going to abstain. We got seven minutes today. I haven't read them.
Okay, one abstention. We have one ordinance that was going to be on second reading. Just have it read by title, please.
Okay, ordinance for second reading, 2014-03, an ordinance to amend and restate the Central Business District redevelopment plan in its entirety.
Thank you. My understanding is that this is something that we're going to want to table to the next meeting. Mr. Rother, I don't know if you have anything that you can share as far as the logistical reasons why we're tabling this?
We still have to have a planning board hearing on that ordinance.
Okay. Do we know if the planning board's going to meet before this is considered...
Yeah, there was a miscue with the planning board. They did discuss it, but it wasn't a full statutory review. They do have a meeting on April 7th, so the recommendation would be to carry the public hearing on this, too. And what I couldn't remember is, our meeting was originally scheduled for April 14th, but I believe that's Passover, so there were some emails back and forth about rescheduling that to, I think, April 16th.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, was that...
April 17th.
That was a Thursday?
Yes.
So, the recommendation would be then to carry the public hearing on this ordinance to April 17th.
Okay.
And I would announce, again, that there would be a public hearing on that, and of course, we're going to have to republish on that.
Notice that on the 17th at 7:30?
Yep.
Okay.
We have a lot of people, we have two trustees. Are we going to have a quorum? Because they're... Are you going to be on the 17th? Okay.
Okay, great. So, with that being said, can we just table this to that meeting? Is that fine as far as...
Yeah, but I would announce that there's going to be a public hearing.
Yep.
Move it as you normally would.
And move to table, ordinance 2014-03.
Second. And to hold a public hearing on the 17th.
April 17th.
And to hold a public hearing on the 17th.
And directing clerk to re-advertise the new public hearing.
Who is the second by?
Trustee Clark.
Trustee Clark is the second.
Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed abstentions? Thank you.
Just a point of...
Can we just make sure we post the, on the website that the meeting change is being done?
Yeah. I'll make sure that that happens.
For trustee Rother, can, I watched the last planning board meeting, and I had sent some of these comments along to village council Rother. Is the planning board familiar with what they're supposed to be doing with this ordinance right now? Because the formal review just didn't occur. Is somebody walking the new, there's a lot of new planning board members, too, walking them through the statutory requirements? Because before this government, you know, governing body can take action on second reading, we need, we need actual documentation from the planning board, like written, whether it be a resolution or a letter from the planning board chair. Can you just work with the planner and the council there?
The chair knows that they have to give us an official answer, whether we do it by vote or not. The village planner did give an overview of it, but the first time we discussed it was at the last planning board meeting. We asked everyone to read it and have their comments ready at the next planning board meeting, or if they had any questions or comments, to please send them to the chair and planner before the next meeting, at which point we'll have the discussion. And that's as far as it's probably going to go. I will remind you, the planning board, some of those planning board members discussed a very similar ordinance, the first go-around a couple of years ago, and there was no objections then. So, there's some new members this time, they have to review it.
It's more than just an objection. They have to do an analysis of the ordinance relative to the...
Master plan.
To the master plan. And we'll have a conversation with council for the planning board so that proceeds...
I would include the new chair, Howard Colter Maxon, in the conversation, what do you want?
Steve, just a question to you. The 45 days from when we referred this after the first reading, did that begin already, like, over a month ago? Because we're getting close to the timeline that if they don't submit something to us within 45 days, we can act, correct?
Yes, that's absolutely true.
Yeah, I mean, technically, because of our meeting schedule, you wouldn't have another meeting. Today's actually only day 42, so today is not, you know, it was with the expectation and hope that they would do it in less than 45, but they did not. We've now postponed it to our next regularly scheduled meeting. Theoretically, you could schedule a special meeting and jump in front of them, but certainly that's nobody's intention.
For the last few years, the planning board has not had necessarily the subcommittees meeting, like the technical review committee and the ordinance review committee. So, it makes it a little bit difficult. I understand they're supposed to do it, but they haven't done it, and I can't, I can't be the one to force them to do it.
And the other, to Mr. Rother's point, we will, we recognize there's a new chair. There are, I think, even a number of new members on the board. So, we will certainly get with council to the planning board, the planning board chair to make sure that all the new members and older members certainly are experienced in it, understand their charge. In this particular case, it's under the redevelopment law, but it has a similar provision to the land use law in terms of review, report back for consistency with the master plan, specifying any, you know, and explaining any findings of inconsistency. They're also authorized to provide additional recommendations. The impact and the importance of that report is if the board does come back indicating inconsistency with the master plan, then this board can nevertheless adopt that, but in doing so, they have to have a majority of the full membership, not just the quorum. of the full membership, not just the quorum present, and they have to state on the record that they acknowledge it and why they're going ahead and doing it inconsistent with the master plan. So we will ensure that all the members of the planning board, council, the planner, everybody's on the same page on that. We're gonna also take steps to make sure that any new members who perhaps have not had an opportunity to familiarize themselves with the master plan are given adequate time to take a look at that so they're in a position to participate.
That, that's why we made sure we told them last meeting, to make sure you have the stuff to read and to reach out. But I will also point out, one of the members, one of the new members appointed does have to accuse himself because his company owns property in the redevelopment zone.
Barry, do you know if the development plan is on the website?
Which one?
The, the one that they're gonna review, the planning board is gonna review.
Don't think of this.
I, I don't see it.
It was posted in its entirety. It was.
I don't see it.
Correct? Wasn't it after the, two meetings ago, we thought, we posted the full plan for the first one, but there's another one. The one from November?
Well, let's make sure that what the planning board is reviewing is also publicly available on the website.
On the website, no. The, the November, the November iteration of that plan should be on the website.
Thank you.
So you guys will coordinate and make sure that's up there?
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. We have two ordinances for first reading. Before we read them by title, Mr. Lewis, is there anything? Because these are obviously going together.
Well, they're, I mean, they're both bond ordinances. They're not really related. The first one, 2014-04, which we've discussed briefly, this is a refunding ordinance that sets up the process by which we will sell bonds, locking in the current historically low interest rates to essentially pay off and take ourselves out of the Essex County Improvement Authority funding that was taken back a number of years ago in connection with the SOPEC project, as has been discussed and certainly by trustee Levison and myself. When you did the analysis, that particular program, as the number of participants in the pool, it's a pooled loan program run by the county, as the number dwindled, our proportional share of the administrative costs continued to increase to where the cost of the money, we're significantly better off. And I think the projection is we'll save about $70,000 on, that's on 2014-04. 2014-05 is, is just, I don't want to call it a standard, but a bond ordinance for our 2014, sort of the early version of our capital improvements. So that's, that's those two ordinances.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinances for first reading, 2014-04, refunding bond ordinance of the township of South Orange Village in the county of Essex, state of New Jersey, providing for the refunding of all of the outstanding pooled governmental loan program bonds of the Essex County Improvement Authority, Authority issued for the benefit of the village, authorizing the issuance of not exceeding 2.5 million aggregate principal amount of refunding bonds of the village to effect such refunding and appropriating the proceeds thereof.
Okay.
Move.
I second.
Moved by trustee Levison.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cullen. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee David Ford, Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, were these two tabled at the last meeting? I guess, no?
Four and five were tabled. Oh, wow. You're right. I, I move to take ordinance 2014-04 off the table.
You can do both at once.
No, we have to, there are ordinances.
To take them off the table, you can-
Oh, okay. I, I move to take 2014-04 and 2014-05 off the table.
Sir, second?
Second.
So we have to redo the whole process?
Yeah.
We do.
Okay, seconded by trustee Levison. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Okay, the ordinance has been taken off the table. At this time, I'd like to ask for a vote on the ordinance 2014-04.
Do I move?
All right, moved by trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cullen. Could we have a roll, please?
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, two, ordinance for first reading, 2014-05, a bond ordinance authorizing capital improvements by and for the township of South Orange Village in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating an aggregate amount of 1,625,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not exceeding 1,543,750 in aggregate principal amount of bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Moved by trustee Cullen.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Rosner. Could we have the roll, please?
Is this a motion to lift from table?
Uh, no, the motion to lift from the table, we're done on both ordinances at the same time.
Yes, we just did it.
So this is a motion to pass the ordinance on first reading.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, resolutions on consent agenda?
I move that the ordinance 2014-04 and ordinance 2014-05 be scheduled for second reading and the final passage at the April 17th, 2014 board meeting, and a public hearing be held at that time for the reference ordinance. The village clerk is authorized to take the necessary actions to publish public notice for such hearing. And that's it.
A motion by trustee Davis Ford, seconded by trustee Levison. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Thank you. Now we can move on to the consent agenda.
Okay, resolution 2014-068, resolution authorizing the award of contract to independent constructors to replace a fuel management system in the amount not to exceed $37,816.60 for New Jersey State Contract Number T-0849. Just read the whole consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Resolution 2014-069, resolution requesting the township of West Orange to manage stormwater entering Luddington Brook and to enforce property maintenance codes with the respective properties along Luddington Brook. 2014-070, resolution awarding contract to Zenith Construction Services, Inc., for River Greenway Project Phase 5 One Pathways in Cameron Park. Resolution 2014-071, resolution awarding contract Frank's Truck Center, Inc., for the purchase of a 2015 Freightliner Model 114 SD with a 30 cubic yard container. Resolution 2014-072, resolution awarding contract to Frank's Truck Center, Inc., for the purchase of a 2015 Freightliner Model 108 SD with a five yard dump body. Resolution 2014-073, resolution supplementing temporary budget appropriations. Resolution 2014-074, resolution to award consulting contract for initial assessment of public safety radio system. And last but not least, 2014-075, resolution requesting the Federal Army Corps of Engineers and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to immediately release the Raway River Basin study to the public and requesting abandonment of a proposed 880-foot long dam in South Mountain Reservation.
Thank you. To start, could we take 075 and do that separately? Is that okay? Because I think there's gonna be a little more discussion there.
Yes.
Okay. And then also, Mr. Lewis or trustee Levison, is there anything that you want to say about 073, the temporary budget?
Just generally, New Jersey law allows, initially authorizes, the municipality to adopt temporary appropriations for the first quarter of the year in an amount not to exceed 26.25% of the prior year's appropriations, with exceptions for debt service, capital improvement fund. If the budget has not been fully adopted, within the three months, you're permitted to then do a second round of temporary appropriations. That's what, what this resolution just does, that based on recent developments, the auditors, we anticipate some things being finished up this week, so that I fully expect we will have the budget introduced and even adopted before this, but you just to pass them now and it all just gets melded into the budget.
Thank you.
Where does this take us through, though, in terms of the-
Technically, we cover another quarter.
Okay.
Through the end of June, and I anticipate we'll, we'll have the budget done and adopted well before then.
But you have a couple items, no, you have a couple items in there which are in additional, above the 20-some odd percent.
Well, the only ones which would be debt service and capital improvement fund, and those are exempted from the 26.25%. And typically, because your debt service, when the payments they may be due at the beginning of the year, so you may incur more than 25%, and that's the reason for the exception. So those are the two items that go just to full funding with the full debt service schedule is.
I have one question. Number 70. For, for the, the contract being awarded to Zenith Construction, can you just go over, you know, where the funding for that is coming from to the public?
That has, it's a $90,000 New Jersey DOT pedestrian bikeway grant, and then the balance is coming out of the village's open space trust fund.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Just, we went through the, what number is it? 074? We forwarded out after the last meeting, all the proposals that we received, and nobody had requested. We, we got sample reports from the two lowest bidders, and so the steering committee, whatever you want to call it, had a meeting with both vendors. We got, we reviewed the sample reports, and so the recommendation that you're seeing tonight was unanimous from, from the subcommittee.
Okay, thank you. All right, so do we have a motion for all the consent agenda items minus 075?
I move.
Okay, moved by trustee Davis Ford, seconded by trustee Levison. So we have the roll, please?
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have one resolution for separate action. We already had the title read already. Trustee Clark, this seemed to be an issue that you were quite familiar with and had requested, so if you could, you sent out some backup materials earlier.
Yes.
But if you could give us all and any member of the public just a brief introduction to this issue?
Okay, I'll try to focus on brief. Yes, so I apologize if this seems a surprise. I hope some of you were able to look at the materials I sent along earlier today. This is in reference to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which has done a feasibility study. This is in order to address not just stormwater, but flooding mitigation issues, primarily for Cranford and for some Union County towns. Goes back to, I guess, about 1999, when they attempted to, they were, basically, towns were crying out for some help with various flooding issues that were going on. And eventually, around 2002, they, the U.S. Army Corps teamed up with the Department of Environmental Protection to do a feasibility study of the Raway River Basin, and the, basically trying to add some greater protection for towns downstream. You might know, you know, we've all had our issues with flooding in all the towns that are anywhere near a river. Cranford in particular has been hit pretty hard. So this was in part to address their concerns. There's something called a mayor's council, which is a group of mayors from various towns in that affected area, which reached out to the Army Corps to try to push this study along. After 1999, it kind of sat around for a while. So in July of 2013, the Army Corps finished their initial feasibility study, but did, didn't really release it to the public. It was just put up on their website. So unless you knew about this, it, it didn't, you know, ring any bells. Of particular concern to many of us in Essex County is that this feasibility study outlined seven different options for mitigating flood, or potential flooding. One of those options is to turn a significant portion of the South Mountain Reservation into a dry detention basin. So, meaning, put a dam at one end, the extreme south end. So if you take South Orange Avenue up the road and then make a left onto Brookside Drive, follow that to the bottom of the reservation where it turns into Glen Avenue, there is, the proposal was to put a dam there. 70 feet tall, 880 feet wide, and it would be a dry detention basin. So that means that most of the time, there's, there's no water in it. It's really only when there is extreme weather events that create enough stormwater runoff that they could then dam, fill that up and hold on to it, basically. That's kind of the game. Hold on to the water to delay how quickly it heads downstream to other towns. The issue, as far as I'm concerned, and people concerned for the reservation are, is that in order to do that, you need to basically, well, you're creating a huge dam, kind of an eyesore, maybe a property value issue for those in Melbourne. But you also have to remove basically any of the geographic features at least 70 feet high. You can't really have trees or shrubs or anything that could potentially wash into your dam and then create issues later on, because the whole point of the dam is that you have to be able to release flow when you so choose. And obviously, trees and things like that floating around in there would, would be a problem with that. So this has not been something that was generally known to the public. It was kind of closely held. But recently, groups, specifically the South Mountain Conservancy, as you might imagine, is, is concerned about this. They started a group specifically to try to look at other alternatives and to encourage other alternatives, but weren't really getting anywhere with the Army Corps. And recently, other group, Save Our Reservation, which has been headed up by Fred Profeta, has been putting a lot of work into that. And the sole focus of that group is basically just to have the Army Corps know that there is opposition to this option. Not opposition to stormwater mitigation, but just to take that one option off the table. There are other alternatives outlined in that plan, and basically just want to see that one taken out of it. And so they have a petition, which has 2,652 signatures as of a few minutes ago. And so that's the, the basic idea. Full disclosure, I have family in Cranford, and they, they got hammered in Hurricane Irene. So I, I think everyone's interested in finding a way to solve some of the problems that certainly communities downstream are having. We just don't want to lose one of Essex County's exclusive features that is enjoyed by a great deal of Essex County, not just those of us immediately adjacent to it. And so that is the, not as short as I would have liked, form of that.
Do we have the actual language to the resolution? I saw the short title. Is there the long form anywhere?
Do we, do we have the printout for that?
Is it in the packet?
Basically, what it asks for is for the feasibility study to be released to the wider public and then specifically to have that one particular option removed from consideration. I do not.
Trustee Clark, I have just kind of a general question to defer a little to your expertise here. Obviously, it kind of makes, it's kind of seems strange that the study is not public already. That seems like kind of a no-brainer.
It's, it's released on the Army Corps website, but again, unless somebody knew about it and was looking for it, they wouldn't know it was there.
So what, I guess then I'm, then I'm curious, what, so what would this then do? I mean, what would, what would we, what would be the sort of expected action if someone saw this and reacted the way we want them to?
The expected action is that the more people who know this is an option, the more people will be concerned, and the more the U.S. Army Corps and the DPA will hear that there are people in this area who would be very opposed to that option.
Well, there's a petition as well.
Yes, there is a petition.
I mean, as far as ask them to release the Raway River Basin study to the public, what, what, what do we want them? I mean, I just want to make sure we're clear as far as what we want out of this.
Right.
What do we want them to do from that?
The U.S. Army Corps?
Mm-hmm.
We want them to release that to the- We want them to release that to the general public, so that the general public is more aware of what is going on, what is being considered, because basically, that could sneak up on everyone, and if there's enough political momentum, that's just going to happen, and by the time anybody knows about it, it's kind of too late.
But it is posted on their website?
Is on their website.
So my concern is that if the language is such that it is, and they would probably consider having it on the website, released to the general public, that they will then just ignore the resolution. I don't want that to happen.
Well, there's the second part of the resolution.
Right.
Which is the specific remove that dam option.
And I mean, is there any language that we could use that would help further, you know, I just don't want someone to look at that and say, well, we already did that, so we're ignoring that clause. Is there anything more that you'd like, that you think that we could ask for to make the information more available? Like, I mean, are we requesting they have a, like a hearing or a meeting about it?
That's what I was about to say.
You know?
There is going to be a meeting on March the 31st, but it is closed to, it's at the U.S. Army Corps offices in New York City. However, it seems it's basically by invitation only, so a member of the...
So do we want to ask that they have a similar meeting like that, but here, in the region that's going to be affected? I just want to make sure that this is as effective...
That's an interesting point. As far as the region affected, I mean, it's a good deal of Essex County. I'm not sure what venue would be best for such a thing.
There's county facilities they've used before at Dakota Arena, I think, where they have county-wide meetings like this. I don't know how many people they can hold, but I guess, I just want to make sure, you know, we've got one chance to pass a resolution. If we want them to take some further action, it sounds like they may already feel that they've met the first clause. The second one is a pretty big ask, not to say that we shouldn't, but is there also something in between that we can do to help get people more aware of it?
The other aspect of this is that by individual municipalities passing such resolutions, it helps out political higher-ups. For instance, Save Our Reservation, I know Fred Profeta met with Congressman Payne, and he was definitely interested in this, but certainly, the more towns that express this sort of thing publicly, this concern, the more ammunition for elected representatives.
Do we want to request that they basically have a meeting where they can kind of present the study, and people can ask questions about it?
I think that would be great.
Eventually, there has to be, let's see, first comes the economic impact study, and then there has to be an environmental impact study, at which point they have to hold those publicly.
Yeah, but wouldn't we want to be proactive to let them know where we stand before they make a commitment?
Well, that's the idea behind passing resolutions like this, and directing them to, you know.
I do know that...
Have any other towns or the county passed any resolutions?
Maplewood has.
Maybe we should be doing, maybe we should be feeling, if we, assuming everybody's on the same page, maybe we should be working on some of the resolutions that Maplewood, possibly Melbourne, and...
Well, assuming this is a...
Yeah, I based mine off of Maplewood's and then added the, remove the dam option specifically.
Is the municipality owning the property, Melbourne?
Well, it's county...
Their property's owned by the county, but it's annexed to Melbourne, that portion.
Yeah, yeah, that portion is Texas.
I do know that Fred Profeta, who's taking the lead on this, as you stated, he met with Congressman Payne, I helped facilitate that meeting, and he's also meeting with the county engineer and the county executive in the near future. So...
I think also, we should make it clear that the normal, level-headed and mild-mannered Walter Clark has used blue language and just said, "Remove the dam option."
No, not Mr. GQ.
I just emailed the resolution. Anyone, those of you that have access to your email.
I tend to agree with Alex, that if we're going to do a resolution, we need to be a little bit more strong, and assuming everyone's against it, or at least feels that this has not been well thought out in terms of the area and preserving the reservation, that we probably should take a stronger position on a resolution, and I'm not going to word it instantly, but I think the general consensus is that we're against what they're proposing, and that we should, that should be the general consensus of our resolution, especially if we want to get it out there as soon as possible. And I will tell you that the village administrator just sent us the link for the resolution, so if we've accomplished what we want, I understand the point of it, and we can actually pass that resolution and another one, and pair it with it, and maybe we can wait to the next meeting. I don't know if it's urgent to do it right away.
Well, I'd like to have something out there before the 31st.
Well, can we amend it right now? We can amend it and pass it now, so you, because I know Walter Clark wants to have...
Have it open and word, if you want to add to it, tell me which one.
But I would also, if you could check with Melbourne and Maplewood to send us a copy of the resolution on this, I think those are the two towns, and West Orange.
Walter, do you have the petition link?
Yes, it's, let's see. Do you want me to send the petition link to you?
Yeah.
All right, what do you guys think of, and it'll be a friendly amendment, so I don't really need to move anything. Why don't we go ahead and remove the, therefore be it resolved, that it release the study? To the village president's point, it is a public study right now. If people can download it, I think that loses the essence of what we're trying to say.
Is it something we could download and put on our website, or...
Yeah, apparently, it's posted on their website, so we can put it on ours.
In fact, that's part of what I included to you, was the PDF.
And then, so the actual be it resolved would be that the Board of Trustees, you can, I'm sure, Mr. Lewis, play with it a little bit, expresses its opposition to the alternatives that require construction of an 880-foot long dam in the South Mountain Reservation, and requests that it be removed from consideration by the Army Corps and the NJDEP in their entirety.
I think that that's strong, much stronger, I like that.
And then the last section would remain the same, is that this resolution be forwarded on to all of our representatives?
And we can amend it right now and vote on that.
Yeah. Is that okay with you, Trustee Clark?
And that way Walter Clark, Trustee Clark will have the document he needs.
Stronger is fine with me.
Is everyone okay with that language?
Yes, I think it's good.
Mr. Lewis, did you essentially get that?
Yes.
Would you like to reread it back into the record?
Yeah, well, I don't know, do you want the whole resolution, or do you want...
Just the big resolve.
So the resolve, we eliminate the first and now be it resolved, that the Board expresses its strong opposition to the two alternatives which require construction of an 880-foot long dam in South Mountain Reservation, and requests that those alternatives be removed from consideration by the Army Corps and the NJDEP in their entirety.
Does that work, Trustee Clark?
Yeah, it works.
I move the resolution.
Okay, motion by Trustee Column.
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Levison. We can take a roll call.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Rossner?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rossner?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rossner?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
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 Yes.